The evening meeting for, or the regular meeting for September 26th. We closed session, report, City Attorney, I don't believe we have one.
No, there's nothing to report out.
Okay. Roll call, City Clerk?
The record will show that all members are present with, I'm assuming that Mayor Procton Rozansky is Councilmember Nichols, present?
Mr. Nichols will be here shortly.
All right, thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing. Councilmember Curry will give the invocation after the pledge, and Councilmember Daigle, would you lead the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please join me in prayer. Our Father and God, we come before you in a time of trouble in our world. We lift up to you our troops overseas and ask your blessings upon them. We lift up our President, our Congress, and our Governor, that you would give them wisdom and discernment. And we lift up the 83,000 citizens of Newport Beach, and we ask your blessings upon each and every one of them. And as their representatives, we ask for wisdom, we ask for compassion, and we ask for judgment, that we might all do our jobs here wisely. Amen.
Presentations, we are going to start off with the Junior League of Orange County, and they have an event that they wish to announce to us, and it looks like we have a group of people that are going to be participating, or...
Okay, first we'd like to thank the distinguished members of the Newport Beach City Council for having us here today, and on behalf of the Junior League of Orange County members, I'm Trulli Boring, a member of Newport Beach, and we are here to announce and invite the city of Newport Beach to the Christmas Company. It's our 31st annual, and the dates are October 14th through the 18th at the Newport Dunes to raise money for at-risk Orange County women and children. And we are excited to be returning to Newport Beach because our first annual was held here in Newport Beach and at the Dunes, and also our headquarters is located here at Newport Beach, so we're happy to be here. And for more details, you can go to www.jlocc.org.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now have a presentation to tell us a little bit about the Pier de Vere event, which is 100 years between the piers, and this is going to take place on October 8th, and we're going to have a little bit of information on the parking lot, street closures, and shuttle plan.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for having me this evening. A little background about the, oh, my name is Sean Levin, and I work in the Recreation and Senior Services Department, thank you, Todd, and the October 8th event is a culmination of a year-long celebration for our 100-year birthday in the city of Newport Beach. And the day is going to consist of bands at both piers, at Balboa and Newport, and also we're going to have about 50 booths at each pier, food, activities, game booths, lots of things for the kids to do, lots of things actually for everybody of every age to do that day. So, a big welcome to the community from, from the city to come down and enjoy the event. It's been being actually organized for over a year with a volunteer committee of members of the community and also city team working together, so we're really excited for it. And what I'd like to show everybody is our parking plan for the day and street closures. This is, this is our, our plan for the day for parking, and I guess before I get into this, a big thank you to police and public works for being a large part of putting this together. They've really put a lot of time into making sure we have a comprehensive plan for the Where do I park? If you're going to come down, what should you do to park for the day? There'll be limited parking on the peninsula, as there always is. If possible, if you live in the area, we're asking people to ride their bikes. There'll be racks provided at both piers, we're going to bring in extra racks that day for bike parking, or walk to the event, or you can carpool. We're going to have a free shuttle that's located at 500 Superior, which is known to most people as the old Newport Technology Center, and that shuttle's going to run from 11:00 a.m. till 7:30 p.m. We're going to have 20 buses that are going to be running that route. And the route is going to go from the Superior lot down to the Newport Pier to 15th Street for the 15th Street activities, then down to Balboa, and back up to Superior. So that's the route for the shuttle. And there's also going to be shuttles that are going to shuttle in between both piers all day long, so if you do go down to Newport and decide you want to go down to Balboa to see what's going on, you can hop on that free shuttle. The last shuttle of the day is going to leave the Newport and Balboa piers at 10:00 p.m. Those shuttles, what's going to happen with the shuttles, so we can get a good flow, at 7:30 p.m. the shuttles are no longer going to run from the Superior lot, and they're all going to go stage at both piers, so after the fireworks ended approximately at 8:45, everybody can be shuttled out off of the peninsula. And here we have a map of the, the Balboa Pier, and it shows the closures and when they're happening. In the red, those are the closures that, that are going to take place at 11:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 7th, and go through midnight on the 8th. And that lot is going to be used for vendor VIP parking the day of the event. The orange areas are going to be closed at 6:00 a.m. on Saturday, October 7th, and through the 8th at midnight. And that lot, where that's at, that's going to be where the chalk art is going to be going on. And we're going to have some professional chalk artists who are going to make those really neat 3D chalk arts, some of you have ever seen that, but they're really incredible. And citizens are going to be able to get, buy squares for $3 apiece and make a, be part of a big tapestry chalk art. The green area is going to be closed for no parking from 4:00 a.m. to midnight on Sunday, October 8th, and that's so we can set up for the vendor booths and bouncers. The little blue strips, those are going to close on Friday and reopen on Wednesday, October 11th. They'll probably be open earlier than that, but that's just for unloading of the stage, to get the stage down, and also we have the Showmobile for a side stage coming in adjacent to the park. And the road closures are in yellow, and those are going to go into effect at 4:00 a.m. to midnight on Sunday, October 8th. Any questions here at this pier before we move on to the next one?
Is Balboa Boulevard going to have all four lanes, two lanes in and two lanes out during this entire timeframe?
Yes, Balboa Boulevard will not be closed at all. Okay, here's the Newport Pier. The red area will be closed Sunday, October 8th at 2:00 a.m. and will reopen at midnight. And the whole area on Oceanfront is going to be where all the vendor booths, food booths, and activities and game booths are going to be at, and they're actually going to stretch the whole length. And the one little piece of parking up on the north end, kind of where Mutt Lynch's is at, that's where the vendor parking is going to be, as well as the rest of the redded-out areas. The orange is, that's designated from 4:00 a.m. on Thursday, the 5th until 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 11th, there's just going to be no parking. That's where all the trucks are going to be coming in to load and build the stage. And in the yellow, those are the street closures on the 8th. So those are all the closures for the day and our, our plan and flow. Just want everybody to be aware of kind of what's going on that day, and also all this information and these maps were, are, half of them have been mailed, the other half are getting mailed tomorrow to every address on the peninsula, so just trying to get the word out as much as possible, and the main thing is, we just really want everybody to come out and help celebrate the day with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, those maps are on the website, and you can go to NewportBeach100.com, and all these maps are posted.
Thank you, Sean. The other thing that we'd like to invite, if, if you're a boater and would like to observe this during the peak hours, between 3:00 and 4:00, we are encouraging boaters to come out and, and sail back and forth to, to look at the, the beach, but give the people on the beach an opportunity to see what sailboats and boats of Newport Beach are.
Would that be in the ocean, not in the bay?
It'd be in the ocean. And the American Asian Yacht Club, I believe, is participating, and we're trying to work out with a couple of the other yacht clubs and also getting them to participate, so that we can have a little bit of the yachting view from the shore. Thank you.
Is, is there a distance that boats are going to have to stay off the piers when the fireworks are going on?
I believe it's an 800-foot distance, and the Harbor Patrol will be out there too and in...
Absolutely. And it's also going to be on Channel 16 that day, which is a, is a marine channel, and the Coast Guard is most likely going to be out that day assisting us to push boats off at that time.
Well, actually, Channel 16 is the emergency channel, so, but they'll keep boats off. Are, are there fireworks at both piers?
Yes.
Yes, they're going to be simultaneous shows, they're going to be the exact same show, and they'll be coordinated at the same time with the music, so it's, it's going to be quite, it's going to be great.
Okay, thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you.
Who's going to make the presentation for the Marine 1-1 Mess Night?
That would be me, Mr. Mayor, since I'm on the 1-1 Committee. I just wanted to use this opportunity and future council meetings, I guess the next one only, for the opportunity to let people know that we're going to have our third annual Mess Night in order to honor the First Battalion First Marines. Since the last Mess Night, this time last year, they were deployed in Iraq, they are all back now, they're with the loss of 11 lives of that battalion. So we think it's going to be a big success, the city has adopted the 1-1 Marines, so we know that there will be many council members and wives who will want to attend. The date is Thursday, the 26th of October, and this will be at the Balboa Bay Club. Social hour starts at 6:00 p.m., dinner promptly at 7:00, as Marines do things, and if anybody wants further information, they can call the City Manager's Office at 949-644-3000.
And what was the date again?
The date is Thursday, October the 26th. Tickets are $225 apiece, that pays for you and also a Marine to get in free. So this is a way that we can honor them, a lot of them will be going to other parts of the country, will be leaving the 1-1 and having other assignments, so this is really an opportunity for a lot of them to get together for one last time before they go off elsewhere, and for the city to show their support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Orange County Human Relations Committee report.
And we have an, an annual report here.
Yes, the staff has been good enough to distribute the annual report in advance of my few words. I am here this evening to talk with you about what the Human Relations Commission has done in Newport Beach in the last year, and give you a copy of the annual report. I am Pat Crone, resident of Newport Beach, 835 Amigos Way, and I'm a Commissioner on the Orange County Human Relations Commission. I've been honored to hold that position for 27 years. So many of our services, of course, are countywide and therefore are not broken down by a city, so those would be things like, we give a training in the, police training in the Sheriff's Academy, we give hate crime training, we have our Human Relations Commission awards, and many educational programs available to the public. I would like to share with you just a little bit of data that describes what we did in Newport Beach last year, and that is the last fiscal year. In cooperation with the Newport Beach Police Department and with individuals and groups, we documented seven hate crimes or hate-related incidents in Newport Beach in fiscal year, that was in, that was in 2005. We mediated 42 cases in the courts or the community in the last fiscal year, in which one or more of the parties was a resident of Newport Beach. We built community through Newport Beach residents and staff through our Hate Crime Network, the Victims Assistance Partnerships, which we have, and our many diversity training sessions. We serve Newport Beach youth in Newport Harbor High School through our school inter-ethnic relations program and our school violence prevention programs. A Newport Beach student participated in our Walk in My Shoes Symposium this last year. And students and teachers from Newport Harbor High School and from Cronin Del Mar High School all attended, not all the student body, but the students from both high schools, representing both high schools, attended our Walk in My Shoes Symposium and learned more about how to build inclusive, safe school communities. We'd like to close by, I'd like, well, we want to underscore the importance of building human relations infrastructure. Just like you build storm drains before the rain happens and you plan for street closures before the good luck occurs, we need to plan for human relations infrastructure. This means we do this through our relationships, our model programs, and the institutions with whom we work. And this is especially true now in Orange County, where we're undergoing dramatic democratic, demographic change, and seeing lots of changes in our county. Those buses that have been here a long time, it's remarkable what we see today and compare to what we saw 40 years ago. And it's important that we build this infrastructure so that we can make sure that our community is a, a safe and respectful place for all of the people who reside here. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. That's the report from the Orange County Human Relations...
Commission.
Commission. And thank you for the copy of your annual report. Those to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilmember Nichols, do you have anything? In the way of announcements?
Not in announcements.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, construction is underway at the Back Bay Science Center on Shoemaker Island, where we have water quality testing and also education for children, and I'd like staff to provide a progress report update at our next study session. Because this was a collaboration, we had a lot of stakeholders, including non-governmental entities, and so I think it'd be useful for the council and for members of the public to know how things are proceeding, so I look forward to that progress report. Thanks.
Councilmember Ridgeway? Councilmember Curry?
Two items, Mr. Mayor, in the past we've heard testimony from neighbors on Ocean Boulevard regarding people out to pass the curfew and graffiti issues, lawyering, and issues like that. And we talked about having the police chief come back and address those issues before the council's study session, and I'd like to ask the City Manager to calendar that item. And then we have, as you know, created the 1-1 Memorial Committee, we get to fill those appointments, so I'd like to have that come back for appointment, hopefully in advance of the Mess Night coming up on the 26th of October. Thank you.
And Councilmember Selich?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Rozansky?
None, thank you.
Well, I've got to stick my chest out a little bit and brag, I want to welcome the 266th baby that was born after September 1st, when the city of Newport Beach turned 100 years old. And I'm particularly proud of this one because it was Molly Elizabeth Webb, and she's my fourth granddaughter. And she was born September 21st at 11:41, so that's my announcement.
Grandparent, when you get to be a grandparent, you'll do it too.
We're longing for those bicentennial moments now.
That's my bicentennial moment. Consent calendar.
All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 7 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols, do you have anything from items 1 through 7 that you would like to have discussed further?
Yes, but I'd like you to let somebody else pick first.
Councilmember Daigle?
None, Paul.
Councilmember Ridgeway?
I want to defer to Councilmember Selich, I believe. Are you going to pull items 3 and 7, or?
I'm going to pull 7.
You're going to pull 4.
3 and 4 is what they were going to...
3 and 4, okay, then I'll defer to you guys, I would like to make a comment. Even though it is removed from calendar, I will refuse myself from item number 6.
Okay, Councilmember Rozansky? Is there any left?
No.
No, thank you. Right now we have 3 and 4 removed. Councilmember Curry?
Yes, item number 7 is the Wi-Fi RFP. I think that's an exciting opportunity for the city in terms of providing greater freedom of access to the web for the city. It was clear, however, in the study session...
Well, are you going to call it, or are you going to...
I'm going to ask that it be continued.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. 7.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, we're, the item 7 is going to be continued, and items 3 and 4 have been pulled. Councilmember Nichols, have you figured out which one you were interested in?
5 and 6.
5 and 6?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, do staff have any that they would like to pull? We have, we have one left.
No, we have two. Oh, the reading is...
Okay, anybody in the audience want to pull either item 1 or 2? Okay, seeing that, looks like we have items 1 and 2.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that council adopt items, consent calendar items, numbers 1 and 2.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 3, I believe that was, Mr. Selich was most interested, interested in that.
Okay, well, I'll just repeat what I said at the study session this afternoon, that I had some concerns on this, this resolution, and I talked with Patty Temple, the Planning Director, and she alleviated a number of my, my concerns. However, I, I had two things I'd request that the staff look at in, in coming up with their recommendations on the ordinance. One is that there be an appeal process on these, on this off-site parking through the Planning Commission and not the Harbor Commission on these off-site parking agreements, and what was the other thing now? Can't remember it. Can I remember what the other one was I brought up?
The number of spaces?
That the planning staff, I think, would review the parking situation.
Yeah, yes, thank you, thank you. One of those evenings, yes, that the, that somehow that we have, when the Harbor Resources Director issues these permits, he coordinates with the planning staff so that we double-check and make sure that the parking lots that, or parking areas for these off-site parking arrangements are not already being used by restaurants or other uses through off-site agreements, so we don't have a double-counting of these spaces. So those are, those are my concerns.
Okay, now does, let me just toss that, this particular item is Marine Charter land use and parking regulations, and our recommendation is to adopt a resolution, initiating amendments to Title 17 and 20. Are you requesting for, requesting changes so that this resolution would have to be modified?
No, I'm just bringing this up so that we're sure that when the staff brings it back that those issues are covered.
Okay, so that the recommended item, recommended action is still in effect, okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I would like to add a comment to that. On the right to appeal, which goes to Planning Commission, I'd like to expand that, or at least have staff look at it, to allow third parties to appeal. I, I suspect Mr., or Councilmember Selich is just saying the applicant could appeal, but in this case, because some of these off-site parking areas are adjacent to residential areas, I, I think the appeal right should be more...
No, I intended it to be anyone to appeal.
Okay, okay. Okay, would the general public...
Make a motion.
Wait a second. Would the general public like to comment on this?
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Hi, my name's Dolores Otting, I live in Newport Beach. I'm a little confused. On page 2, it says, "In order to fulfill the intent of regulating marine charters through the commercial harbor, it is proposed that the off-site parking regulations be revised so that the Harbor Resources Manager has the authority to issue the permit if it is demonstrated." Now, okay, so now he issues the permit, but we're going to go through the Planning Department and the Planning Commission and have third parties be able to appeal also? Because if that's the case, I think you've changed this resolution.
The resolution is to initiate, so it's real simple, it's direction for staff to bring back that initiated ordinance. Right now, the parking is evaluated by the Revenue Department, it really is, has no teeth to it.
So you don't, so you don't need to provide in here that the resolution states that it's going to be the Planning Department and Planning Commission, that's something that you then do later on?
Correct.
Okay, all right, it's just...
We're, we're initiating a resolution...
I know, I understand.
And the new, the ordinance will go through and explain all the various different items.
Okay, but if somebody looked at this, they wouldn't know that that's what you would be doing.
Well, Ed's just giving...
So that's my problem, is that...
Ed's just giving staff further direction, it's just certain things that they'd like to see.
Right, but, may I, I might clarify this. The, when you're going to initiate, make a change to Title 20, which is the zoning code, you have to have a resolution initiating that amendment beforehand. You don't have to have the details in that initiating amendment...
Okay.
Because the actual ordinance will come forth for first and second readings, the same processing.
Okay, all right.
So this is just intended to have the council tell the staff that they want them to initiate this amendment, and they're giving them more detail on what they want to see.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, because that's the only way they could really do that anyway. Okay.
Okay, anybody else who wants to comment? From the audience? Well, come on up.
Good evening. My name's Joe Garrett, I live at 611 Poppy Avenue in Cronin Del Mar, and I wanted to comment on your resolution number 4.
Yeah, Joe, you're, you're...
This particular item...
A little premature.
This particular item is Marine Charter, we haven't gotten to 4 yet.
Ah, I got you, okay, sorry.
You get, you, next.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the initiation of...
Mr. Nichols had indicated that he had a question.
Oh, he did, sorry.
Just the last sentence in there, I'd like to read it and, and get a view from the council a little bit on it. "In addition, it is proposed that the zoning code be revised to permit marine charters by right in all commercial zones with a reference to commercial harbor activities permit requirements of Chapter 17.10." Now, I didn't follow all the 17.10, but certainly size of boats versus size of where they're putting them in the harbor, not just commercial zone, needs to be looked at in some of this. Is that taken, I mean, we need to address that in this resolution, is what I'm...
Well, I had the same question of the staff as to why we weren't maybe going the other direction in requiring use permits in the zones where they're permitted by right, and the staff indicated that by taking, getting away from the use permit process, we actually go from something where we give someone a right that runs with the land, so to speak, to something that's actually renewable on an annual basis, so we actually have more control with it being by right than we do through a use permit, so I was perfectly happy with that.
My question is, that is, supposing we have an area that has commercial behind some small line of restaurants, like maybe, well, along the, the Balboa, I mean... small line of restaurants, like maybe, well, along the Balboa, I mean, Newport Boulevard there, by Woody's Wharf or something like that. We certainly don't want real large commercial vessels in there, and I trumped up parking arrangement for it. So, I mean, how... This seems to say that they have a right to anywhere where there's commercial, and I just think that needs to be explored and codified as to what we mean by that.
I think that that's what the purpose of the permit is, is to establish all the various different conditions, and if they can't meet those conditions because their boat is too big for the site, then that's one of the conditions that would be placed on the permit, and they wouldn't get a permit. So, you may have it by right, but you still have to get the permit to... And meet the conditions on the permit. So, this, I believe, is going to handle your concerns.
Okay, well, that's sufficient. They have direction, so can we vote for the matter?
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Item number four is group residential facilities and large family daycare homes, and this is for... Again, this is for initiating amendments to Title 20 of the General Municipal Code to revise land use classifications and regulations related to both group residential facilities and large family daycare homes. Is there...
It's me again. Don't I get to talk?
Councilmember Selich had some questions. I had told the council at study session that I could probably address his questions, so he may want to ask them first and then...
Mr. Selich, would you...
Thanks. Yeah, on the group residential facility portion of this, I'd like to know what the genesis of this request coming about is, and, you know, why our existing regulations don't cover that... Don't cover that particular situation. And also, I'd like to know what the effect of it's going to be, is the staff envisions writing this ordinance on people that may want to rent out a room or two in their home.
The genesis of this was a couple things. Number one, it hasn't been a problem so much in recent years on a code enforcement level, but over the years, there has been a problem with illegal units in the city, in certain areas of the city, or where people will basically rent out rooms or sections of a house to multiple people. And it's very difficult for code enforcement to establish that that's an illegal unit because the people that live there all say that they live together as a single-family household, and the city can't regulate that. The city does have good definitions of what a single-family... What a dwelling unit is, but it's more difficult to establish. Then there's been recently some... Quite a bit of community complaint up in an area in the Santa Ana Heights where the community feels that a single-family property owner is renting out individual rooms, like a boarding house situation. I went to... And the property owner doesn't live there. So, I went to a conference and learned that some other cities, I think particularly the city of Orange, was looking into, based upon case law, the validity of requiring that a property owner, if they want... They can rent their property, but they can only... You can limit the number of written or oral rental agreements to one. And that way, if people are all living together as a single family, they should only have one rental agreement. This would work for a single person that was living at their home that wanted to rent out one room. They could have one rental agreement, or they could rent out as many rooms as they want, but they can only have one rental agreement. So, that was the impetus for this. It isn't intended to look at... To deal with a situation with our... The sober living or the rehabilitation of facilities. That's a completely different regulation. This is for, basically, assistance with code enforcement in preventing illegal units and preventing people operating a single-family home as like a boarding house.
And again, this is instructions to initiate and put together all the various different rules and regulations.
Correct.
Could you give us a brief rundown of the reason for the large family daycare concerns and including that?
I don't know as much about that one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was the one that actually had this come... The first one did come through at the request of the city attorney's office. Large family daycare homes are one additional category of group residential living arrangements that are preempted from local regulation by the state. In this particular case, the regulations relate to family daycare, both small and large. And much as we do with the sober living facilities, the group recovery homes, there's an absolute preemption from local regulation for small family daycare homes, which are defined as eight daycare attendees or less. And then there's a second category for large family daycare homes, which can go up to 14. The difference in state law is that for the groups that are more than the eight that's permitted by right, is that the state law does provide for localities to adopt location restrictions and other specific requirements that would govern their location and some design characteristics related to the use. The city has never adopted such regulations, but we have had a complainant that has talked to us several times over the past, I'd say, six months or even more regarding concerns regarding an existing family daycare that exists in their neighborhood, and concern that that property owner may be looking to add a second family daycare facility through the construction of a second unit on an R2 lot. In talking to the state regulators in this regard, it would be a fairly easy matter for that to occur, because while family daycare is permitted only when the resident is actually the operator of the home, through an employee arrangement or some other arrangement with a second employee, they could occupy a second home on the same lot and have another 14 children on that property. And when this came through my office, I actually thought that was a very significant point, that especially we have so many areas with very small lots and very minimal yards, and that we should take advantage of the possibility of location restrictions for this particular use, and that's what this proposal would bring forward.
Now, you've mentioned large facilities, but if you had a condominium on a single lot like in Corona Del Mar, where you have a unit in the front and a unit in the back, you could still have two small daycare. We can't regulate that?
That's correct.
But we could regulate it if they had the eight to 14 or...
Correct.
Okay.
So, we'll at least get what we can get. That's as far as state law will let us go.
I know, you have to open it to the public. I'm going to move the action, however.
Okay, just a second. Mr. Nichols?
Well, I think Joe Garrett is here, so I'm not going to steal all his thunder, but he enclosed in our letter the regulations in Anaheim, and they show a pretty high distance that they're asking for no two centers that would have to have licenses to be from one another. So, I guess this is the larger daycare centers, but the small, if they were too small, they would be actually less than one large one, because too small are eight or under, and basically, you have to have one person there. So, you'd have two... I guess you could get to 16 that way instead of 14 on the large daycare centers, but you would still have to have two people there. So, there... At least that would limit the number of kids on an adjoining property to some number that's relatively what they can get. Now, what I believe he's concerned with is you could get these surrounding you virtually, and so the limitation by distance between centers is certainly appropriate, and I think that should be put into our regulation.
Okay, well, that's the whole purpose of bringing this up, is to put the distance in there.
This is also available in group homes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this? Please come forward if you wish to.
My name is Ann Watt, for the record, and I want to thank Leslie Dagel, Dan All, Patty Temple, and Patrick Alford, and anyone else who has brought this resolution to the city council. And the problem is in our neighborhood, Bayview Heights, and it's probably in a neighborhood near you or in your neighborhood, if you don't know about it. But it is definitely a problem, and it does have to do with non-owner occupied illegal resident in a family... A single-family resident neighborhood. We're concerned not only about traffic, but people that will rent to an individual without requiring a contract on their part for their rights. So, we're wondering what kind of, you know, people are being invited into the neighborhood when we have families and so forth and so on. The problem with the resolution I see is that I think the group home should be separated from the... The group residential facility should be separated from the large family daycare, and that is because I think you can move forward with that group residential as is, but it looks like because the state is involved in regulation on the other part, it looks like you've put a place mark in there, and a lot more work has to be done.
Okay, they will be separated. They're not... These are for convenience of our operations here. We're considering it as one item for this resolution only, but when it comes back to the council with the actual ordinance, it'd be two separate ordinances.
I applaud you, and I say, fast-track the first one. There's a couple of items that I see state regulations, and it says in the discussion here that reasonable standards, restrictions, and requirements concerning spacing and concentration, traffic control, parking, and noise control are permitted. In other words, you can put ordinances in there. And reasonable standards, I would like to suggest that you do not permit owner, builder, contractors to have these facilities. We have a lot of owner, builder in the neighborhood, and I would be reluctant to be a tenant of one of those, especially, you know, if you... They don't have the handicap facilities, you know. We're worried about faulty wiring and plumbing and lack of firewalls and so forth, so that I would, you know, exclude owner, builder from both ordinances. Thank you very much. Thank you, Leslie. You are awesome every time I call you. You're right on the ball, and we really appreciate all of your efforts, the city entirely. Thank you.
We are going to do something about this, and I'm sorry you've had to endure this very unpleasant situation for some time, and I appreciate your cooperation, working with the city attorney's office, I know the speaker, following you, you know, you've been submitting information, and thank you for your vigilance, and we are going to try to do something about this.
Thank you.
And I would just add, I'd like to thank you for your very thoughtful email today on this topic, which was very helpful in getting a handle on this issue, and obviously you spent a lot of time thinking about it. Thank you.
And I ask you to... Those future commenters, I'm not trying to cut you off, but we are going to initiate this, it looks like, and so if you ask, can let us know, are there any other items that we should be considering related to the ones that are actually described in the statement? Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of the council. My name is Caroline Dobbins, and I live on Orchid Street, and I would like to thank everybody involved in getting this issue to the forefront, because it's most important to me and my neighbors. We're very passionate about our neighborhood and about our quality of life there, and we have experienced many disturbances of the peace as a fallout from the issue of units being rented out in single-family homes, so I appreciate very much this being put on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, my name is Mark Abrams. I'm a property owner in the city of Newport Beach. I also would like to thank the council for addressing the items for number four. My concern is, is that these facilities are doing treatments at a different location, and then they're just housing the individuals in the city. And I'm not sure how that falls into the mix and the requirements for the ordinances, but I wanted you to consider what they're doing. They're trying to do an end run around what you're trying to establish and what the state is establishing.
Don.
Thank you.
And we've got two things going here, don't we? We have multiple families in a house which have no bearing on ADP homes, and then we have ADP and large family daycare centers, which are state licensed facilities in the larger sizes, right?
These are... And these will be handled in different sections of the code, and we are just bringing them up under one item so that we'll have...
Okay, well, I'd like to just recognize that. I have nothing wrong with the latter. I thought we were handling that by our zoning regulations, though. I mean, we've been... It's worked in Corona Del Mar, and that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Come on up. Don't be bashful, you missed your time.
Get your three minutes of fame. Here's my card. Excuse me, I was corrected, five minutes of fame. Only use three, though, please.
Thank you. I've already introduced myself. I'm Joe Garrett. I want to thank the council and the staff for bringing up both of these items. Unfortunately, I'm the victim of both. On one side of me, at 609, there's a two-unit duplex that I've had as many as 11 people living in. They've turned it... Converted into a three-unit complex. I've already called code enforcement. Now, they've gone ahead and closed up the stairwell leading to the third illegal unit for the second time, and I'll be acting upon that and bringing it to your notice, because I wanted to thank you for bringing it and making it a point. At one point, there was 11 people living in it, just in the small... Excuse me, there were nine people living in the three unit. There was two... There was three... A couple of different couples and some individuals, and they were all sharing a kitchen facility and a restroom. And so, it made it very, very difficult to take that into account. So, I think this new ordinance with your leasing policy will probably address that. But that is a serious issue. The second one that I've written the letters on, which I'm thankful for the response, is which it looks like you're already looking into, and that's a large daycare facility. Besides the traffic issues that I'm impacted with, since there is a fire hydrant in a red zone in front of my house that people continually park in front of, they also park in the wrong direction, there's also the noise, and it looks as though this is probably going to pass. So, there's a couple other items that Mayor Webb had asked that I could add to it, and that would be... One of them would be timing. The other night, there were... They had the children out playing in the front yard till 9:00 PM, and that created a lot of noise and disturbance when a lot of myself and a lot of the other neighbors were trying to relax. The other item would be that in the way that the facility looks. There are now four large play units in the front yard, including AstroTurf, a castle, a small home, a slide, and any other kind of small facility you could think of small children playing on. It looks like a miniature golf course. And I know in our general plan, there's a lot of talk about keeping the character and the neighborhoods looking in a nice way that you would like the character of the neighborhood to be upheld in the general plan, and I think this goes opposite of what you're trying to occur... Trying to take place in the general plan. So, I don't know if there's any way that I know that you could enact any kind of an ordinance to take care of that problem. I know if there was a car sitting up on blocks in the front yard, you would have code enforcement out there asking them to remove it. So, what I'm asking you to look at tonight is, besides the initiation of the ordinance to look into this problem, but also would be some kind of guidelines into the time of the use of a facility with eight children or less, and also possibly a restriction on the amount of business facilities that they are allowing into the front yard. And those business facilities are in the way of their... And those business facilities are in the way of their, you know, large plastic toys. And I would encourage any one of you to please go by and take a look at it. The address is 609 Poppy. Take some photographs, they're out there every day, 24 hours a day, and you can kind of get an idea of what I'm looking at. Besides that, I want to thank you once again for bringing this to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else before we vote on this item?
I just want to thank the City Attorney's Office for informing us of the field of regulations that we're able to craft laws and policies that are both useful to our community and also defensible. You know, this is a situation that clearly has certain areas upset, and we're certainly here to try to craft legislation that is going to be useful to our community.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item Mr. Nichols called up, this is a Seminole Slough study, and it's an amendment to an existing professional services contract with Noble Consultants to review the design and working with the Corps of Engineers on dredging the Seminole Slough. Mr. Nichols, what was your question?
My question is associated with, but not directly trying to inhibit this or anything. We still need sand down on Big Corona Beach.
Mr. Nichols, that's out of order. This has nothing to do with.
Well, it does, because you're tying together the dredging of the Santa Ana River and the dredging of Seminole Slough to help in a cost basis, and that same sand that you're getting out of the river is awful good on the beach. And we just last time showed that our beach was five to seven feet lower than the other beaches, so the Big Corona needs that sand. And I disagree a little bit on where, but certainly the entire beach needs to be brought up in height.
I suggest that you recommend that for a capital improvement project for next year.
It would seem that this is certainly a good place to bring it in, because it's.
Is there, is there a motion on this item?
Second.
Anybody in the public wish to comment on it? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Item six is the Sober Living by the Sea, and the recommendation is to remove this item from the calendar. Mr. Nichols, what is your discussion item on this?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
The Sober Living by the Sea is the facility on Villa Way that was servicing all the homes that Sober Living by the Sea has throughout this area, particularly close to the city hall, in fact, toward the beach, that, that housed ADP patients, alcohol and drug dependent. These are brought in, and this is where they had their classes. I'm just trying to get a little background.
We're removing this from the calendar because situations have changed to where we're no longer required to consider this, because they've moved their operation to another city.
Well, the question is, Don, we are going to allow in the two buildings that remain, even though we, we ask that they have partitions in them and so forth to try and cut down the size, classes of 20, two times a day, morning and the evening, six days a week in both, both facilities. So you've got classes with 40 people there. You're also going to use this as a staging place to bring the, the people up into Costa Mesa, I guess, for their classes that they were having here. Now, if I had a facility.
Mr. Nichols?
Just let me finish, and I'll be done.
Okay.
If I had a facility, commercial facility down there and was using it that heavily, I would need a use permit for it. If I had an office building and I had that many people coming in, congregating, leaving from there, and had classes being attended there, had a nurse on duty six days a week, I would still need a use permit for that. I contest that this still needs a use permit, and I believe that it will have a hard time getting one.
Okay, is, is there a motion on this item?
Well, here, actually, I'd like to hear from the planning director as to whether or not this needs a use permit. Or the city attorney.
The, the basis of the background and the information that's provided in the staff report was as a planning director, and our office was also involved in getting the applicant to meet the conditions of a permitted use in that area, so it does not need a use permit.
And there's really no discretion on our part as to whether to allow them to do this or not?
Correct.
So there's nothing that we would be voting on, or we're not giving them any special consideration here?
Correct.
Very good, thank you. Then I make a motion to approve the item.
Which is to remove the item from the calendar. Is there a second?
I have one more comment on that, Don.
A very short one.
Okay. I talked to Mr. Ellison, who happens to be the head of the State Department on this particular matter, not on, on exactly this, but very close to it. This is in what they call an integrated facility, Sober Living by the Sea. And the question was whether each of their specific units out there, which we don't know how many are, there are, but at least 30, these facilities, whether they all would require a license, a separate license, because they're an integrated facility. And his comment was, no, but integrated facilities are supposed to be close enough that you don't commute by truck or traffic or car or bus from one place to another with them. You're supposed to be able to walk from one to the other. It's supposed to be close. And I am not sure Sober Living by the Sea corresponds to the definition of an integrated facility anymore, and, and that really implies that that licensing is probably suspect and violates the state. Now, that's something I'll pursue, but I, I really believe that this deserves more look C than is being given.
Thank you. Is there somebody from the public that would like to comment on this item?
I'm just totally confused again. Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. Are you removing this item from the consent?
Removing this item from the calendar, that's what the recommendation is.
Okay, then is it going to be coming back in two more weeks, or is, so it's never to be coming back again? Okay?
Unless they change their use to something that requires a use permit.
But then all these things of the letter dated August 25th of what you're going to be implementing? Which is the plan for the rooms?
Those aren't going to be implemented, because.
Because it's going to be removed, so nothing is going to happen.
Basically, they get to stay there and operate, excepting that their, that their classes have to be held in a different city, and they're going to be bussed from this big bus stop up there. They will, and they don't have to have as many parking spaces.
Okay, I have another question, though, on this, and so maybe this is something that can come back in the future, because it's probably not related to the item. But these are all right next door to each other? I can't, I, well, some of them are. I can't find the page now. I had it when I was sitting down, and then when you move, okay, two, okay, so we have 2809, 2811, 2813 Villa Way, so they kind of look close. Can maybe one day, can you explain clustering with these group homes or alternative sentencing facilities, the drug and alcohol homes? Can you, I mean, explain how many feet away, or do they have to be so many feet away from each other? Because I believe originally, speaking to people at the state, that they have clustering or laws, but we don't have those anymore, because that's the big problem here on the peninsula, is that there's one, and then there's another one, and then there's another one, and then there's another one. I can come up and talk about this in public comments, but you could just answer that. Thank you.
The question was, is that this, this isn't considered under the clustering, because they're not living here?
But those that are.
These are offices.
Okay, thank you, but those that are living? Thank you, Robin.
There's, and I can get to you, Dolores, if you want. Todd Ridgeway had pointed it out to me, and I read it recently. There's a really good article in the Western Cities Magazine that does a very simple job of explaining the regulatory atmosphere for the group homes. There is no ability at this point in time for clustering or any distancing regulations for the alcohol and drug recovery facilities. And the city, we are actively working at the direction and with the assistance of the council to try and see if we can get some state legislation through, and we're also going to need to get federal legislation through, because that's really where our big issue is right now, to be able to allow it. There have been multiple bills in the state legislature that has been, have been, tried to get passed, and they have failed. So we're going to try one more time.
Thank you. We've, the, we have a motion in a second to remove this item from the calendar. Please vote.
With Councilmember Nichols voting no, the motion carries.
The item seven was continued.
Do we need a motion to continue it?
Okay, we need a motion to continue it.
Second.
Just to say that I think we heard in the, in the study session that the RFP needs a few more comments and some input from the industry. I think I welcome the opportunity to do that, as well as the police department, so it has to be continued to the next meeting. But I think the Wi-Fi concept is a very exciting concept that we're introducing to the city, the opportunity to both improve the efficiency of how we provide government services, but also provide a tremendous resource to both residents and visitors.
Thank you. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on our continuing item? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Item eight, which is the review of the fiscal year 2005-6 Community Development Block Grant Consolidation Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, acronym CAPER, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It was a very understandable report. Somebody like to make a.
I'll make a motion to adopt the report's findings.
Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this item?
Mr. City Manager? I think you need to open the public hearing as an official public hearing.
This is an official public hearing. It is now open. Would anybody like to comment? Seeing no one, I close the public hearing.
I have a question on this, Don.
Yes, Mr. Nichols?
Sorry. My question is, are there hookers in these grants?
Hookers?
Hookers?
Absolutely not.
So basically, the money is not, we don't have to furnish facilities for 23 years or something like that, and if we don't use them in exactly the right way, we can't be fined or held accountable?
No, once, once we give the money, it is with the expectation and with an agreement that certain services are going to be provided.
Is this the one where we're giving it to 10 charities or something like that?
Well, they are social service groups.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And in this particular one, it explains.
Thank you.
The expenditure of the $381,000. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this? No, we already did that. Please vote.
Motion carries.
This is a proposed amendment to the CDBG One Year Action Plan, which is item nine, and this is one where we had the Fish Harbor Area Incorporated was unable to use their funds this year, and we are now dividing it up amongst the Mobile Meals Program, the South County Senior Services Home Delivery Meal Program, the WISE, and SPIN, which is a substance abuse and rehabilitation program.
I move the action. Second.
Is anybody from the public wish to comment on this?
Public hearing again.
Open, I open a public hearing. Anybody wish to comment? Close the public hearing? There's a motion on the floor. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is an appeal from modification permit 2005-135 at 15 Vista Tremontto. The applicant and appellant is Yuchin Lau, property owner, and the recommendation, the staff recommends that the city council deny the appeal and uphold and affirm the decision of both the planning commission and zoning administrator. So the city council now has, would the appellant please like to, or, well, I take it back. Can I have a staff report first, and then we'll have the appellant?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is appealing the planning commission's decision and is seeking approval to allow the retention of over height walls, pilasters, and a gate located within the required front yard setback. These improvements were constructed without proper building permits and range in height from six to eight feet and encroach approximately seven to nine feet into the required 10-foot front yard setback, where the county zoning code limits the heights of such structures to a maximum height of three and a half feet. After reviewing the applicant's request, the planning commission upheld and affirmed the zoning administrator's previous decision to deny the request, and cited that no practical difficulties associated with the property existed to support the modification request, as well as vehicular site distance and safety concerns. Based on staff's review of the appeal and the applicant's justifications for the encroachment, staff has concluded that the required findings for modification permit cannot be made, as the lot does not pose a physical hardship or unique difficulty that would preclude the applicant from designing a conforming project. Adequate space exists within the buildable area of the lot, and a 10-foot setback is a minimal restriction given the large size of the lot. The project is not compatible with the existing development of other residences on Vista Tremontto or other conforming residences within the neighborhood, and the over height walls may create an unnecessary safety hazard and site distance impediment as vehicles pull out of the property's driveway and neighboring driveways. Therefore, staff recommends the city council uphold the decision of the planning commission and deny the applicant's request. Thank you.
Any questions of, Jaime?
Is this property controlled by homeowners association?
Yes.
Is there architectural restrictions in that?
They do, I was told that the project did go before the architectural review committee for the homeowners association, and they denied the request and recommended the applicant apply for modification permit with the city.
So they denied the request, and the applicant went ahead and built it anyway?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant's representative wish to be heard?
Yes, thank you. My name is Michael Migan, M-I-G-A-N, and my address is 600 South Main Street in Orange, Suite 900. I'm the legal representative for the owners, they're not present here, and I just want to address some of the comments by the planning, planning commission's staff, because it appears that the, the city council's staff has relied primarily on the findings of the planning commission. I have some pictures, and hopefully I can work this, I've not done this before, so if you can bear with me, I appreciate it. The house in question is the one on the, the right, and these pictures show a few things. It seems like one of the primary concerns is the safety of the placement of the, the wall and the pilasters and the gate. You can see the left part, portion of the wall and, and pilasters as we look at that view, but the reason I'm showing this one is because the driveway on the property to the left of the one in question is very short, and as you'll see, and I'll show you, that there is really no safety problem with the cars pulling in and out of that. Here's a closer shot of the same thing. But I also want you to notice that the contrary to the planning commissioners, or commissions finding that the encroachment is seven to nine feet on, within a 10-foot setback, that's simply not correct. It's more like two feet into the encroachment. There's about an eight-foot distance from the curb to the actual structure itself, and that's significant, because.
Excuse me, sir, I believe the property line is usually back of sidewalk rather than curb.
Yeah, I, I kind of had that idea, but I could find nothing to indicate that that was the case, so.
This will be a very unusual tract if that isn't the case.
Okay, I appreciate that. This shot shows, is taken from the driveway of the property to the left when you're facing the subject property, and you can see when you're standing in the driveway, you can see the road, but the, the primary impediment is the tree and not the wall itself, and as we go out into the street, there's really no problem. There's a car. There's a car parked in the driveway there, and you can see it pretty readily from the street, as well as from this view, which is, if you were facing the property, it'd be to the right of the property. You can see the car pulling out if, if that was the case, so there's really not a problem there. And same thing from the sidewalk. This is another angle from in front of the house to the left of it, but in this case, the car is actually in the driveway itself, and this is farther back, and this is going even farther from, to the right of the property. You can see the car still standing in the middle of the street, and this is even farther back. You can barely see the car, but it's pretty visible, so that, that safety issue is really not, not an issue at all. And that's just a picture, but anyway, this is pulling out of the driveway itself, and one final shot, this is pulling out of the house to the left of the subject property when you're facing the property.
Question, then, the car is, actually, the front of the car is facing the street, so it isn't backing out?
This one, the second of the two, is backing out, the first of the two is pulling out knows first. Excuse me, I'm wrong. I think it's, it's the other way around, this one. Yeah, there's the mirror there, so this one pulling out knows first. This is the one pulling out of the driveway next to the subject house. Hopefully, I answered your question. Now, one of the comments in the staff report for the city council is that there was nothing new to, that was added to the findings of the previous hearing, but we, we submitted a petition that has, I think, around 12 signatures of people who believe that this, this should stay there, and that it also says on its face that this is not a safety hazard. I don't know if you got a chance to look at that, but that would be new in addition to the original report. And I think that was all I wanted to comment on as far as the, the issues that I thought were the most significant ones, so if you have any questions, I could address them.
Is there any reason why this was constructed without the benefit of building permits and, and without getting permission from the county and your initial proposal to build it in the setback area?
Yes, because it appears from the records that we were able to obtain, and we submitted copies of the permit activity to the planning commission the last time around, that these, the structures that are similar to this one, I think there's about six houses, and there's pictures of them too, in the planning, planning commission's staff report, that those were done with the approval or with the, by the actual developer itself, when this property was part of the county, and we could find nothing that would indicate that there was any problem with, that the county might have had with those. So, I, we would take issue with the reference to these other six, I think, six properties.
Did you obtain a building permit from the county for doing this?
No, no, we did not, but...
Are you aware that almost every agency out there requires a building permit for anything over three feet?
I, I don't have any...
You're an architect, right?
What's that?
Are you an architect?
No, I'm an attorney.
Attorney, oh, I see.
But I should know, and I appreciate that, and I have no reason to doubt that, but the, the primary thing that the architect was actually relying on was the fact that these others were built by the builder without any problem, and apparently, there's still no problem too.
An architect should, should know building permit procedures.
No question.
Okay, is there anybody from the, else from the council that wished to ask a question? Councilor Duff?
Yes, I have a question of staff. Could a resident have a shrub that would be at the same placement, at the same size, that would also impair any line of sight?
The, to the extent that a hedge is, is, I think it's more than 80% opaque and operates as a fence under certain circumstances, then a hedge is defined to be a fence, and so if that was within a setback, then that would be subject to the same regulations.
Can anybody else have any comments? I personally think that the drawings, I mean, the pictures that the appellant showed convinced me 100% that there's a site distance problem and a safety hazard, and, and I will make a motion to sustain the, the planning commission's denial of the permit. I'll second that, but you have to open this up to the public. I will. We have a motion, but I'd like to open this up to the public now, please. Seeing no one else, any further discussion from the city council? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Public comments. Public comments are invited for non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject-mattered jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit their comments to three minutes before speaking, please state your name for the record. Is anybody here for public comment?
Wow, what a surprise!
Hi, my name is Dolores Oding, I live in Newport Beach, and I'm sure by now all of you have gotten the, first, I think, all of us got a telephone call from the Newport Harbor Area Chamber of Commerce telling us that they were going to be passing out a survey, mailing a survey to us, and that they would be coming into our neighborhoods, and that they would be asking us questions about the survey. Well, since then, everyone, I'm sure by now, has gotten the survey, and it does ask you what the most important issue to you is, but what it does miss is that the airport is probably the most important issue we have in the city, and we, you know, we need to make sure that we are being vigilant about that. And that brings me to Mr. Cox, Mr. Richard Cox, that was hired by the city to be a consultant, and he's, seems to be extremely knowledgeable, he seems to be the best choice we could have gotten. I'm kind of curious, number one, as to how much we're paying him and when we hired him, because evidently, that must have been something that came out of the spheres Committee. So, I think that people should know that. Okay, getting back to the Chamber of Commerce, though. All right, so the airport wasn't there, but on the Chamber of Commerce, what, what is happening is that now they are coming into your neighborhood, okay? So, I was thinking that it was actually somebody from the chamber, and I'm like, wow, how dedicated are these people, that, you know, how many do they have, that they're going to be going all over the city? But it is somebody that is hired from other cities that's coming to do this, to take this survey. So, it's fascinating, because I am running for city council, and I've lived here for 18 years, and I ran 10 years ago and two years ago, and this is the most politics that I have ever, ever witnessed in our city. I understand we have a general plan update, but the fact that the chamber feels the need to hire people from outside of our community to come in and ask us questions about our community, I, I don't get it. I don't know what they think could happen at this election, so it's mind-boggling to me. So, just, I wanted people to know that you will be having people in your neighborhood that don't live here, and I don't know if that's such a wise thing to be happening nowadays. Thank you very much, and Mr. Cox, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to respond that, as the chairman of the spheres Committee, I have no idea who Richard Cox is. I can assure you that it's not something that we did, and I, I just, you know, I, I want to refute that accusation right now.
Mr., I'll put a little light on this. This is something that the aviation committee has been working on a number of items related to the airport, and we had asked, as a part of our airport policy, that the city manager monitor various different airport-related items, and Mr. Cox is somebody that is being considered for the, to help out and assist in evaluation of a couple of items that the airport committee has been, aviation committee has been looking into related to noise and curfews and, and takeoff and landing patterns related to the airport.
And as I recall, Mayor Webb, it was a community-based organization that, that came up with his name? It was Airport?
No, I think it was our consultant, Mr. Burnham, may put his name. Yeah, through, I don't know if it was airfare or not. Okay. Any other public comments? I received a letter today, or an email faxed today from the Sheriff Corona, and discussing the accident that we had related to a response, to emergency response from the Harbor Patrol, and I felt that, as far as I was concerned, the sheriff did a very good job of explaining the emergency responses, and that, however, there was one paragraph in there, the, he assumed that I was a retired police officer, but I'm really not, in the end of that letter. But I, I think that, that we've had a lot of discussion throughout the community on this, and I think that we do need to take into consideration that we do have a, a unit within the bay that, that helps protect us, and that there are going to be situations where emergency responses are appropriate, and I'm, I'm really sorry that we had this one particular accident, and, but I think that we look, I need to look at the bigger picture on this. Any other public comments? Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is oral reports from various different city council committees and activities, local coastal program, I don't believe we have anything new on that, do we?
Well, we're in our third redraft of the IP. It is my understanding that one of the committee members is reviewing that with Patrick Alfred, and that we will soon convene a meeting to go over that document.
Newport Coast Committee, Mr. Curry?
Report.
You've already gotten the Centennial Committee report. Marina Park Planning?
The only comment I can make there on not necessarily planning, the, the Legion Hall did approve the concept plan, and the Marina Park Committee met to try to start the process of putting together an amended lease, a, a specific site plan that is detailed and, and scaled appropriately, and there will be further action on this in the months to come.
Thank you. Any other committees wish to report? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is item 11, which is the planning commission agenda for September 21st.
Yes, good evening again, mayor and council members. Planning Commission's meeting was quite brief, luckily, this past time. There were four items on the agenda, three of which were on the consent calendar and were approved with little discussion. The only item which was subject to a public hearing was the Planned Community Text Amendment for the Bell Court Plant Community that was initiated by the city council a few, about a month ago. The, this did generate quite a bit of discussion by the planning commission, because the first time it was heard, the planning commission asked for additional analysis as to the original proposal and the, how it differed from the policies regarding those subdivisions in our updated general plan, and they were different. And after discussion, the planning commission chose to recommend to you a Planned Community Text Amendment which would be more closely reflective of the new general plan policy, and that for the purpose of, of trying to keep the city's general policies in this regard similar citywide, so that it would reduce the possibility of staff errors and, and be a more equitable situation across the board. That item will come to the city council on October the 10th, and obviously, we will provide you with both courses of action considered by the city council, so you can choose the direction you would like to go. That's the end of the agenda report. I, I'm going to take this opportunity just to mention one other planning item that is of, of interest to the city council now. The planning commission approval for our Lady Queen of Angels has been appealed. Things that are appealed must be scheduled for the council's calendar within 60 days, and the applicant has requested that that be heard on November the 14th, and that is when we plan to bring that forward to you.
On the Bell Court item, the residents of Bell Court conveyed to me that they're very pleased with the decision of the planning commission.
Yes, they, they indicated they were comfortable with the changes recommended by the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Temple. Any other comments from the council? Next item is continued business, which is complicated, but it has to do with Sunset Ridge. We're rescinding a resolution and adopting a new one to purchase 15.5 acres of Sunset Ridge Park from Caltrans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Have a, a brief PowerPoint for you. As you noted, this is a action which combines that rescission of the resolution and authorizes the adoption of a new resolution expressing out a new term in this agreement with Caltrans for Sunset Ridge Park. And the specific term involves what's called a scenic easement that, in effect, allows Caltrans to retain some value of the property and therefore sell it to us at a price which is lower than market value, and that price being $5 million. So, I'm going to show you and the folks at home the easement area, and note that, actually have an error in the resolution, that the easement square footage is 197-920, not 197-720, so we'll need to correct that with the, in, as a part of your motion. I apologize for that. So, for the folks at home and for council, this is the proposed scenic easement area. It's technically called a scenic view and open space easement, and it's, if, just to ground you, this is Coast Highway, this is Superior, and we're in West Newport, of course. The overall large parcel itself is 655,000 square feet, so this is roughly a third of the parcel itself, and when you combine, combining this large parcel, this smaller one, and Caltrans counts the fee ownership of the land underneath Superior. Within this easement, the city can develop a full active park except for two things, that would be permanent structures and pavement. So...
Like a restroom.
Like a restroom and a parking lot. We've clear, discussed with Caltrans clearly the things that we can do in that area, and that includes backstops, even the large backstops, bleachers, those can be moved, as well as picnic tables, tot lots, et cetera, so we don't think it's too constraining on the development of this park, and this was a condition that the CTC required back in its September meeting that council member, Mayor Protam Rosansky and I attended.
Did you put a sidewalk around a tot lot?
You could put a sidewalk around it, provided that it was DG and not cement. However, Public Works Director Badam has some ideas as to how to make that DG a little bit better in terms of more ADA accessible. We discussed that issue with Caltrans too, and they said, fine, that would work.
Did you, did you talk to them about the question I asked you about the walkways?
I did.
And bike ways?
I did.
What was their response?
Their response was no permanent structures nor pavement, but they believe that there are pavement options which are not so-called permanent, that, again, the DG with binder, such as used out at the View Parks at San Joaquin Hills Road and at Crystal Coast State Park that would classify as being a paved surface but not technically pavement under this easement.
Is this something that we can, you, you can still discuss with them, or?
No.
Or this is, what, this is over? This is it?
This is it.
Is it act of power?
Sung, huh? Okay. It's time. Let's go.
A question, Mr. Nichols, please. That, that is not all level. I mean, right at the, it goes up pretty fast, right at the, the PCH, but is that level up above? There's a, aren't there two areas that are relatively...
This is an upper area, Dick, and this is a lower area. These are contour elevation, so this is the highest area, this is the next level, and this is all relatively flat across there.
It is. I believe those are five-foot differentials in between the colors.
And here's a slope here. That wouldn't prohibit us from grading this down if we needed to.
So, can we grade it and do that kind of thing?
Yes.
And put active ball fields or whatever we want on it?
No restrictions on grading, no restrictions on ball fields, backstops, et cetera. The only restrictions are the ones I mentioned with Councilmember Solich, permanent buildings like restrooms, so they would have to be sited somewhere in here. Remember, we're just talking about the restrictions are only in the easement area.
Yes.
So, our parking lot should be here, and our restroom should be somewhere around here. They just can't be in here.
But you could grade beyond that or anything so that it could be flat, that whole level that's light brown, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Is anybody from the public that would like to comment on this?
Hi, my name is Dolores Oding, I live in Newport Beach. This is going to be, and I think it's a fabulous project. Dave always does a wonderful... Dave always does a wonderful job. Mr. Kiff, you always do a wonderful job on your presentations. Thank you. $5 million, which is going to be $2 million this year by December 31st, 2006, and then one and a half million by December 31st, 2007, and then another one and a half million by December 31st, 2008. For a total of $213,750 in interest. $5 million is not a lot of money to the city of Newport Beach. And it's not a little bit of money, but it's money that we have in the bank. $213,750 could buy approximately eight lighted crosswalks, perhaps an emergency warning and preparedness system, or even two policemen that we desperately need nowadays. But instead, we're a nonprofit entity. We don't pay taxes. We cannot take a tax write-off on the interest. So I don't understand why it's in the best interest of the residents here to not just pay the $5 million. We save a quarter of a million dollars by doing that in three years. We're looking at all kinds of ways to raise revenue from Wi-Fi to whatever, all right? And here we are, giving some bank or lending institution or whatever, a quarter of a million dollars. So I just have a real concern. I was called fiscally irresponsible, and I'm not fiscally irresponsible. So I have a problem with wasting $225,000. And point of order, Mr. Ridgeway, Councilmember Ridgeway, I asked Mr. Cox at the aviation committee who, who he was working for, and he said the city of Newport Beach. And I was embarrassed to ask him how much he was making, okay? And Mr. Burnham is excited that he's with us. So thank you very much. But $213,000 is too much to pay when we don't need to. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Ridgeway?
I, I would just make a comment to the previous speaker that for the, we're a cash flow analysis city, and the money that is not spent earns interest. And I think we earn about 5% interest. And ironically, our 5% interest probably is more than we're going to be paying on the interest for this property.
So, yeah.
Right. I had the same concerns when the issue came up. And we asked our Dennis Danner and our finance people, and they indicated that we do make more money by investing the money as opposed to paying off the entire $5 million. And so with that, you know, there will be a quarter of a million dollars in expense, but there will be maybe three, three, or $300,000 in revenue. So we actually come out ahead of the game. And it's not being paid to a bank, it's being paid to the state of California.
Mr. Mayor, if that changes, let's say in 18 months, we could always pay it off if we think that the-
Right. There's no prepayment penalty in the loan if interest rates decline.
Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move it.
Anybody else in the public want to talk? Seeing none, please vote.
With, with, sorry, with the amendment, Mr. Mayor?
With the amendment.
Yeah, that was my motion.
Square feet.
Second.
As, and, and-
Your 200 square feet.
This isn't acres, this is square feet, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Then, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. City clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Anybody have any reconsiderations? Seeing none? Meeting's adjourned.